Okay, Paul, I guess you're up. Couple of both officers.
All right, mayor and council. I'm happy to be here tonight to swear in two of our newest officers. James Brandon started in about March and edible Lauren. End of August. You know, I was gonna do that up here. So, um, so swearing in ceremony, they're already licensed peace officers. They've got all the rights, all that kind of stuff. This is the ceremonial thing to swear in as part of our department. So Lauren and James, raise your right hand and then repeat after me. As a law enforcement officer, I solemnly swear.
As a law enforcement officer, I solemnly swear.
To uphold the constitutions of the United States and the state of Minnesota.
To uphold the constitutions of the United States and the state of Minnesota.
To impartially enforce the laws of the United States, the state of Minnesota, and the city of Croxton.
To impartially enforce the laws of the United States, the state of Minnesota, and the city of Croxton.
To work toward providing a safe environment and enhancing the quality of life consistent with the values of our community.
To work towards providing a safe environment and enhancing the quality of life consistent with the values of our community.
To adhere to the ethical values of professionalism, integrity, compassion, and respect.
To adhere to the ethical values of professionalism, integrity, compassion, and respect.
To faithfully discharge the duties of police officer to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
Faithfully discharge the duties of police officer to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
And that I take this obligation freely and without any mental reservation.
And that I take this obligation freely and without any mental reservation.
Welcome.
Okay, moving on. Ashley, can I have roll call, please?
Cressel.
Here.
Clatt.
Here.
Bedbrotten.
Here.
Melby. Melby.
He is present but currently muted.
All right. Jurdie.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Cavalier.
Here.
Okay, it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda, may come to the podium. State your first and last name and address, please. Hearing none from people sitting in the council chambers. Chad, is there anyone waiting on the phone bridge?
There is no one on the bridge. I will close it.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, no presentation.
Agent logged off.
No presentations. This brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove anything from tonight's agenda? Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I don't have a motion, your honor.
Tom and Clayton, thank you. Discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Cressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbrotten.
Aye.
Melby. Melby.
I'm not sure if his Zoom connection is frozen or not.
If it's not, he's holding very still.
There you go.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Okay, this brings us to the consent. The consent agenda. Anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Your honor, we request to amend 7.02, a resolution to approve the city of Croxton's bills and disbursements in the amount of $405,883.22. Check number 67167 to 67261. Our request is to add check number 67262 in the amount of $8,238.14, your honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
No move.
Thank you, Joe. Second by Steve, thank you. Roll call, please.
Cressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbrotten.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Okay, no public hearings, regular agenda. Ashley.
Yes, your honor. Item 9.01 is a resolution to approve dispensing of intoxicating liquor and food on premises at the community event.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
No move.
Thank you, Tom, second.
Second.
Second by Delane, thank you. Discussion.
Your honor.
Amy.
Yes, I'll just give a little synopsis here and then Michelle Christopherson is here as well if there are any additional questions. But UMC would like to host a tailgate on October 23rd before the UMC hockey game at the sports center in the parking lot. We met with both of our chiefs, our Parks and Rec director, myself, the clerk's office, to make sure we had everything we needed. Staff feels comfortable with the arrangements. The chiefs have reviewed layout. We've received the items we've asked for as far as insurance. They do have a licensed vendor that is scheduled to serve with the proper security in place such as wristbands and manning the gates, letting checking IDs for anyone in and out. Staff recommends approval of the event for UMC through this resolution.
Thank you, Amy. Any further discussion?
Are they gonna be able to do this in, say, in the future now? Now it's warm enough to have them outside, but they're gonna have their club hockey all winter. If they wanna have something like this in the wintertime, can they do it inside?
Inside the arena right now, there are, there was some foresight put into some amendments to a lease with the Blue Line Club for the concession lease that would actually allow the serving. It allows the city to control who, when, where serving and consumption of alcohol could take place inside of the sports arena. However, at that time, our ordinances were not addressed and updated, so our ordinance is currently prohibited. However, that is an area we've identified to make sure to correct that, if you will, or put before you for a proposal that would in fact allow that. And I think with the changes in the lease, it appears that was the intent. So we just need to get that cleaned up in our ordinances, among a few other things with our liquor ordinances that are out of date.
Are we gonna be able to clean that up shortly then, or?
Well, I don't wanna make any promises. I can't keep it's on the top of our priority list right now. But getting through that entire ordinance will take a bit of time. And then to come before you for an initial introduction, then there's a publication time and a second and final reading before you.
Okay. Thank you.
So basically, anybody, other organizations can do the same process and come with a request and then bring it to approval through here for now?
That's right, yes. We're doing the very best that we can to work with our current ordinance structures while making sure that we're trying to be consistent with what we ask when people are coming forward so that when we do get our ordinances cleaned up, it won't be a major shift. We may have to adjust a little bit, but we're trying in this manner right now to be able to get these things before the council for approval.
Further discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Cressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbrotten.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Okay, moving, motion carries. Moving on, Ashley.
Item 9.02 is a resolution to approve the dance permit for the University of Minnesota-Croxton homecoming on the premises at Croxton Inn, your honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Can I make that motion, your honor?
Don and Clayton, thank you. Discussion, Amy.
Um, thank you, your honor. This is an additional request through a dance permit for UMC to host an event inside of Croxton Inn for their homecoming.
Thank you.
What circumstance, why do they have to have a permit?
The, we've, we have talked about this a little bit already. The dance permit in our ordinances is also a bit outdated. However, because it is still required, we are doing it probably more as a formality right now. However, it does put the city on notice if there's increased capacity in a building, those types of things for safety. But we will be looking at that also and getting this.
That would be no different than if somebody had a wedding there, so to speak. They have a dance wedding. It's a, it's a structure that has legal alcohol permits and.
Yes, council member Cressel, I do not have a good argument for this.
But. With the permit, right?
Because it's the dance really is what is.
And community members are asked to come, that they can come to this event versus like when a wedding.
Oh, for a closed event.
So, so this is.
I was thinking we're back in the Footloose days.
Maybe we should rename this part of the ordinance.
At a place that was not entitled to a liquor license, like at the arena or somewhere else. I've got that, but somewhere like the Croxton Inn, that's, you know, his question. That's what I was gonna ask too, but, you know, at this point, yeah.
We could either propose that we rename this the Footloose ordinance or we will try to get something a little bit more up to date before you soon.
So it's like invite only versus open to the public is really the difference.
Yes. Thank you, Ashley, for clarifying.
All right.
Did I read in there too, they gotta have like some of the reserve police or something in there too?
Would you, I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
Did they have in there that they had to have reserve police there too?
Chief, it had, uh, chief.
Oh, we have chief Beer Meyer approaching the podium to answer that question.
There is with the ordinance, the requirement for some police presence.
Yeah.
But right now with the number of police officer, police reserve officers low, what we are probably going to do in coordination with the event at the, see, at the sports center. We would normally be running three officers. Right now, we're running two officers in the late afternoons and evenings. So we're gonna put a third officer on just to help out. And that person will make, make some rounds, have a presence here and there.
Right.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Further discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Cressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbrotten.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on.
Item 9.03 is a resolution accepting a bid and awarding contract for cleaning, repairing, and painting two filter pressure vessels, your honor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
No move.
Thank you, Don, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wayne, thank you. Discussion.
There's quite a bit of difference in the bids on there. Is there a reason for that?
Brandon, you wanna fill us in a little bit?
This was actually a bid in '21, too. We held off because they did come in. Last time they came in at a hair over a million dollars. And last winter, we replaced some valves and did replace the control panel with our staff just because it looked like that was the portion that contractors were scared of. And part of this bid requirement is that whoever's awarded the bid has to do 50% of the work or they can't get the bid. Honestly, the, the low bid is, they've been doing painting a long time and they're the preferred contractor. So it might just be what their workload is this winter. But that, that, that low bid is a, it's a really good price, so.
Have we ever used them before?
Uh, we use the, so Oseo is the one that painted the south tower. I, I don't know that we've had them coat our stuff before, but KLM is, this is their forte. This is kind of what they specialize in. Uh, recoating towers and filters. And they were, they were pleased that they came in as a little better, so I trust, trust their opinion, so.
Okay, sounds good.
What was the timeframe? Is this still gonna be in '21 or?
Uh, so the first payment, so this was budgeted, there is, there is, I think, in the 400 or 450,000 left that was budgeted in '21. So that, that'll be the first payment. And then we have another 300 that's budgeted for in the '22, coming in the '22 budget. So, you know, the, the bid is in the 500 range and then the engineering portion and inspecting is like another 70, I believe, so.
Hidden cost.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Thanks, Brandon.
I'll just stay here because I have a feeling there.
Good idea.
Okay. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Cressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbrotten.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on.
Item 9.04 is a resolution approving the public works departments to purchase a motor grader for 2022, your honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Joe, second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Clayton, discussion?
Is this, um, gonna be a second grader or are we turning one in?
Yeah, so there's kind of two reasons we're asking for this right now. As of the end of October, there's Ziegler contacted me and there's gonna be a 5% to 7% increase on this motor grader. So by ordering before the end of October, it'll save us about $20,000. Second are the grader that we're trading in was into the shop and it has excessive blow-by right now. Basically, that means that the compression is low on the engine. So one of the cylinders was found to be about half the compression that it's supposed to have. So we're kind of crossing our, this motor grader is not gonna show up until the middle of summer next year. So we're kind of crossing our fingers that that grader makes it through the winter and we're coming up with some backup plow plans just in case we need to get through the winter with just one motor grader. So those, that's why we're asking for this slightly early here.
Do we have more than one?
We have two graders, yep.
Is this the oldest one or the newer, the two?
Yep, it's the older one that we're replacing. And this, the, it had this motor on this older grader that we're replacing has already had a new. It's already been rebuilt once about five years ago, so. It's, it's about $41,000 to rebuild the engine. And we're looking at, I believe, in the $25,000 range for the trade-in. So it doesn't make any sense to rebuild it, so.
Further discussion.
Your honor, I'll just add, this is the budget item that we have shown in central garage from reserves right now. And we are still getting specs together to go out and, and find out what an annual payment would be on a lease purchase agreement and those types of things. So it is budgeted right now out of reserves. We expect to bring before you some alternative options for purchase.
So even though we approved this tonight, if, if, say, you can find a lease agreement before we do this, can we back out and do the lease instead? Or do we have to purchase this one?
Um, couple, a couple of things. One, if we don't get the purchase agreement signed and in before the end of October, we are not gonna be able to lock in the current rate. The second part of that would be, this is state bid price, I believe, on this motor grader. So we're, we're pretty solid on, on cost. What we're identifying now is if it makes more sense to pull from reserves or if we can put before you a lease purchase, which will really then affect what we have pulling from reserves in central garage for this coming year. Did that, did that answer the question?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay.
When was the last time we bought a grader? Have we ever bought one, I guess?
Uh, they haven't gotten a new one that I'm aware of since I've, I don't think it's within the last 10 years, so.
I don't remember buying a new one.
Well, they're, they're well-used year-round, you know, they're.
Well, that's another thing than that, you know, like, I mean, you say it's $40,000 to rebuild it. You know, we've heard that in the past too, where we only got two graders. Would it, would it still be worth our while to rebuild it and have that for a spare? You know?
We don't, we don't have storage for a third grader, so it would have to sit outside if we were to keep it. Graders have their place, but there's, there's also, you know, narrow residential roads where the plows better fit too. So I've, it, me and Dave discussed it a little bit. I, I think that one's to the point where it's probably better sent down the road. You know, just because you put a new engine in it doesn't mean that the carriage and everything else is in any good shape too, so.
Has it been in the past that they've bought used ones? Is that the, the deal?
From what I gathered from talking to Pat, the last one we bought was refurbished through Caterpillar. So it had, I don't know, 3,000 to 5,000 hours on it. And I don't know that they rebuilt it, but they just went through everything and make sure, rebuilt rams if they had weak seals and used certified, I'll call it.
This is probably the better way to go for longevity anyway.
I, I believe so, you know, I think if we can, it's gonna take on these, these two graders that are, you know, that we've been essentially taking to the end of their life. If we can get past these two and we can roll them every, we'll say, 5,000 hours, we'll, you know, we'll basically be in the same boat we're in right now and hopefully have less breakdowns.
What kind of shape is the other one in?
It, it's in good, the other one's in good shape. Um, I was gonna grab hours on it today and I never got the chance.
How many hours a year do you think you put on a grader?
So the one, it gets used heavier in, you know, it gets used in both seasons. That one gets around 800 hours on it. The other one is typically, sounds like they use it more just in the winter. That one gets about 500. So. It hasn't been very, I, I, I was hoping that we were getting, on the first of the year, every year, I'm gonna get hour reads that I can track that a little bit better. We weren't doing that in the past, so.
Is this new and all the cutting edges and stuff on it so we don't have to purchase them too, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Further discussion. Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Cressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbrotten.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Reports, Amy.
Thank you, your honor. Got a few things that I wanted to report on. One, I did attend last week the Polk County Board meeting. Just gave a little bit of an update on what's going on at the city, answered a few questions for them. Cleanup week is coming, October 25th through 29th, so watch for that. We'll be putting, putting some information out again on Facebook. And I want to spend a little bit of time providing the council and the public an update on a meeting that took place today. Myself, our police chief, our public works director, with members of our county agency, MNDOT, our consultant that was selected SRF for our MNDOT corridor study, met today virtually to discuss the recent pedestrian injury accident at the Broadway and Roberts intersection. I believe that MNDOT especially did a very good job and the county. The county engineer was on as well as city, getting the right people to the table. There was a lot of input and expertise in that, in that meeting today. I want to report for you kind of what the focus that came out of that meeting today. What our focus was, was trying to find a short-term temporary solution while discussions will continue on additional measures that can be taken and then how that will be incorporated in the completion of the corridor study. The SRF, the consultant for the corridor study, has pulled in additional team members that are for pedestrian and bicycle safety just to get additional knowledge, eyes, analysis, start incorporating that. So I appreciated that from them. The solutions that are being evaluated, and I do wanna make note that I, we're not, I can't commit to the execution of these yet until MNDOT has had the opportunity to evaluate these proposals for other safety measures and make sure that we're not creating another issue. But looking at closing the right-only turn lane on Roberts, either with, I don't know if that would be with paint or with, with something, but that would make that inside lane then a combination through lane and turn lane that provides a little bit of a buffer between traffic, especially large vehicles that are making that turn. And then evaluating the signal timing at that intersection and if there's enough pedestrian lead time when the walk signal changes compared to when a green light might turn. So that's gonna be looked at. This team will be meeting no later than two weeks from today, if not sooner, so that we can provide an update to both the council and the public at our next meeting. If something happens sooner than that, I will certainly notify you. I don't know how long it'll take internally.
Does this have a lot to do with the traffic calming that we've talked about several times as far as, you know, changing the whole flow of everything and safety for bicyclists and pedestrians? And is, is, or is this just primarily for that part?
This particular discussion really was triggered by the recent, recent pedestrian injury accident and just the, the knowledge that all of those agencies and partners recognize and acknowledge that's an unsafe corner. However, that will be very heavily incorporated into that corridor study and how that will look for, for safety of both bicyclists and pedestrians, but felt it was necessary to really get something in the works in more immediate.
I know we've had this conversation about that corner throughout these discussions many times.
Yeah.
And we, we all understand it's, it's a, it's a very serious issue.
Yeah.
And once again, something very bad happened. But, you know, people in the public seem to think that coming to the city council, the city should, but it is a state.
That's right.
It is a state highway and, and so we need to do our due diligence too, which I think we have at this point. But we just, you know, make sure that everybody knows that it's being worked on like you just did.
Right.
So I think that's a great thing.
And there's, you know, there's things that if I went and threw some cones out today, I don't know and I don't have the professional expertise to understand where that transition should take place. And that's some of the internal analysis that we want to make sure the solution that we propose and, and bring forward is also not creating other dangers or, or moving a dangerous incident to another area. So they're really gonna evaluate and look at, you know, capacity, the, the traffic volume there. But everyone at the table today felt like that was a viable option to really focus on right now. Additional discussions are being had about signage and increasing awareness and education. And as those things develop, I will bring those forward to you and then make reports publicly so our citizens are aware as well.
I have a question. Is that, um, no right turn light, is that functioning properly? The one that they just recently installed. I've only seen it work once where I've actually seen it work.
That was part of the discussion today and I believe that's gonna be evaluated within the coming weeks. They're gonna, MNDOT is actually gonna come out and, and test those things. In the report, I understand it was reported that the signals were functioning properly, but I don't have any additional data on that.
Because isn't there some way that they could put a sensor on that that if a person on a bike or walking or set that off automatically, that no right turns be made there?
I think that it's set by the, by the button on the signal. And there was a lot of discussion surrounding that today. The, the issue there is what you do with that corner and then what's happening with the other, with the traffic going the other way and left turns. Were all things that were considered. I think a little bit more investigation or exploration of those still needs to be had.
I think too, it's really set off by how close the Tri-Valley Building is to that corner. The sidewalk's actually narrow running down there and how they're trying to perceive that by bumping that out to make people go further out, doesn't necessarily work for semis. Doesn't necessarily work for semis, of course, as, as we've seen, but, um, with that building there, it's, it's a pretty tough fix.
That's true.
They're so close on both sides, I mean, they're right on the corner.
Yeah.
There's no leeway there whatsoever to change anything.
And I understand, I think just to meet the ADA compliance, that ramp where the pedestrians come out did have to be bumped out and that, that really does tighten the corner for trucks, some cars maybe even, it depends on how tight you take that.
Personally and take the corner and try to turn into the first lane like you should.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you can't get around that corner, you're gonna bump it.
Yeah.
Even, yeah, you gotta way out to get, to get around it. So I mean, I, I think it's because of the placement of that building, which is tough for the state to try to figure out as long as that building is sitting there.
There are some discussions happening now, I don't have anything developed enough that I can bring you a proposal, but there are discussions being had now, um, in the community and with MNDOT about that, that particular issue and what is the best remedy forward and how, how each, um, agency or partner would be participating. So we are working on that and as that develops and we have something that I could bring forward for your consideration, then we certainly will be.
Amy, this study that, that we're doing, um, how in-depth are wide-ranging it? Is it, because I feel that this concern is multi-layered. I think it has to do with how small the signage is for the bypass. I mean, I've had many people say that they, they themselves meaning to turn onto that, miss it because it's so small. I wonder what the conversation is about MNDOT and the possibility of doing like only autos and local deliveries. Everyone else take the bypass. I mean, I feel that there's a lot of things, I know that there's been a lot of hearsay about, you know, um, insurance makes them take this certain thing, which I am just shocked by because there are two very hard corners going through town where that bypass does not have that issue. And so I'd like to be able to see as part of this larger report, us kind of, um, really explore those and find out the actual answers and not what keeps going around repea- repeating as a narrative that is not necessarily true.
All of those things were part of our discussion today, actually. Um, I, I think the, the bypass signage and how we educate and what our signs say, we did discuss that um, fairly in-depth today, would not necessarily be part of our corridor study. Because if you'll remember, I don't know if you can visualize the map and I'm sorry I didn't bring it with me today, but covered those yellow and, and blue blocks, if you will. Um, some of this discussion will still be happening regardless of that corridor study. But what the corridor study will cover is some, our traffic signaling, um, traffic calming if necessary, parking. Um, we'll be addressing some ADA, which will certainly impact our intersections. That particular corner has already been a focus, but certainly even more so, um, at this moment.
And I understand, I understand that it's only for that particular area, but I feel that there's a lot of external issues that are actually making that corner or that area or that court, just the corridor for that matter, very unsafe. I will say I've met with a lot of, a lot of concerned citizens, though I'm sure a lot of people here have. Um, and I, I think that there is, you know, even a more heightened awareness, if they're not already, of how unsafe that corner is. And, you know, I had, um, a citizen call me or text me right before this and said she was walking down past Emanation, was walking that way and saw another truck just go straight over those, those cones. And I, I have so much concern as a mom too, with these kids downtown who they're riding their bikes to school or what have you. And for where she was, I, I, it, there's a false sense of safety and I don't know, but I feel that we need to do something, even if it's temporary until we're able to figure out a larger, long-term solution. But I think there's a lot of us that are, that could have been our kid, right? Um, any one of us. So I, I'm just wondering if there's addressing this, even if it's temporary until we can find something. I understand and I think that most of us realize that the study is not gonna be done and, and the work won't be completed until twenty twenty-four, correct?
That's right.
So I, I just wanna make sure that's on the books.
Well, absolutely, yes, that is.
Answer part of her question too, and I've talked to several truckers and if, if you, if you remember some of those big windmill blades coming through town. Problem is, is when some of these truckers type into their GPS, the bypass is not showing up on it. And that's something I was gonna bring up today and thank you for bringing it up, but, um, it's, it's not showing up. So what they do is they tell these truckers that have never been around here or from here to take the old right through town.
Right.
And so I don't know if, if MNDOT needs to do a better job of getting that bypass out there or what. I think that might alleviate some of our problems, but I've heard from several. And my brother-in-law's a, a trucker himself and he's typed it in, I told him to show me and it does not show the bypass.
Well, I think that's why we're talking at, about this being such a layered approach, where it's not just one thing that's an issue. It's that.
Yep.
It's the fact that, you know, um, there's this idea that possibly insurance is sending them through. I mean, there's a lot of like very weird things and I think that we need to look at all of those different layers because I think all of those are contributing and making the, the larger issue what it is, right? It's not just one thing, it's not just the corner, it's not just the bypass signage, it's not just any of those things.
That was certainly the focus of the discussion today. I think we can all agree it's not just one thing. What we have to be careful about and, and really rely on the experts is that when you reroute, making sure that where you're rerouting them to is also safe and that we're thinking of evaluating, addressing all of those things. But all of the things mentioned here today were part of that discussion. How all of those will shake out in the end after, you know, due dig- due diligence and the, the expertise of the different agencies weigh in. Um, I think we will, we are planning to, as, as soon as MNDOT can evaluate the proposal we talked about today of closing the lane, the actual execution of that does not take long, they just need some time to pull their internal team together. It's not our desire to wait until, certainly not until the corridor study is done. The corridor study will continue to address that as we continue talking about how do we address the bypass? How do we, how do we route trucks? Do we need them downtown? Should they be downtown? Are there appropriate reasons for them to be downtown? Some of our, um, downtown businesses do receive deliveries. So there's a lot of aspects and you're right, it is, it's a lot of layers and making sure all the right people are at the table to ask those questions and, and weigh in. And I think we are moving in the right direction, the discussion today was really, really good. And I, it certainly isn't the end today, but we wanted to find a solution that we could really focus on that could be implemented quickly to provide some safety on that corner to begin with as we continue to work through those other aspects.
I mean, is there such a thing as not having a crosswalk there and just shutting it down? I, I realize it's gonna divert people to have to go a long way around, but I mean, is that, is that a thought or?
I'm not sure about that, I, that MNDOT would have to weigh in here was one of the discussions today. You could, you could do a lot of things, you could do another no right on red, but part of that is, um, people's behaviors and patterns. It, we're all used to, all of us that are, are drivers, if you're at a red light and there's no traffic coming, we're kind of trained almost to go ahead and make that right turn. So there are some things that could be done, but we talked about maybe the practicality of some of those. Would it achieve what we're hoping to? Some of them may reduce. Um, that's, that's kind of the way the discussions are happening right now. What are the most effective, um, solutions that we can reach? And it will likely mean a number of things, um, at the end.
I can, for the update, I think, we're not the experts in that, I'm sure that there's not a concern. We have discussed a lot of these, uh, points before, so we're looking forward to hearing what you have to say in the future on this whole issue.
Thank you.
Very important issue in our city and it's gonna be live discussion and, uh, we are concerned about it. So keep us informed and, uh, we would certainly like to know what's going on.
I will do that, thank you.
You know, one thing that I was, I was looking at the other corner that we have down by Domino's and by each one of them, streetlights down there, we got a great big six to eight inch pipe. So if they go over that curve or go close to close, they know they hit it. You know, you look at this corner here, they go over that curb of the semi, you got them little plastic
Plastic.
things, they have no idea they even hit it.
And the, the intent of those was really visual.
Pardon me?
Just the intent of those, I, I don't remember the official name of them, but
Yeah, but they
the intent of those was just for a visual.
Right.
Yeah.
Where you could, when I look at that, you could put two posts, two s- big steel posts right before, two right in the middle and you could still get your ADA crosswalks and if they get too close to it, they'll know it. You know, because right now we've had two accidents that they didn't know they even hit anybody.
Right.
And I mean, the, when you talk about a temporary fix, that would be something you could do tomorrow. You could drill the holes and put some posts down there.
But then you're gonna end up with more traffic issues when you start having trucks hung up on.
I'd rather have them hung, I'd rather have them hung up than killing somebody.
If I may though, the important thing is when we are developing solutions is making sure we're staying focused on what the core problem is. And the core problem is right now, the trucks are not making that turn.
Right.
And so how do we provide space and a safe and lawful way, um, for them to, to make that turn and not be so close to where our pedestrian traffic and our bicycle traffic is? And that's really, we're trying to stay focused on that. There's hundreds likely things we could do today, but really making sure the solution we're putting in place is really helping address and alleviate what, what we believe is that core issue and it is that tight turn there.
Yeah, but that's why I said all along, when we start talking about making it into two lanes there. I mean, you got three lanes right now for them to make that turn and they can't because the trailers are too long. You know, I, I mean, just, that's just the science of the time.
That's a discussion for down, when we do the corridor study, we get professionals in to see what we can, can't do.
I, I think ultimately in the end, and you know, being newer on, on, uh, council, is that I think that these have been issues that people have asked to be addressed for so mu- for so long. And so I think that there is a frustration and wanting of an immediacy because it hasn't maybe been addressed like it could. Um, and, and so I think that, I appreciate that we're going in the right direction and I think letting our constituents know that this has been in the plans and that we are trying to make those things safe or safer, um, for our downtown, I think is a big piece. But I, I, I just, I also understand the frustration that this is not the first time that these have been addressed or brought forth to our council. And so, um, I understand the frustration and I understand the immediacy because it's not like this is the first time. And so just keeping that in mind as we go forward, that we do have this opportunity really to make a difference as we go through the corridor study this year. Um, but also understanding that this has been something that people have been asking for, for a while.
But it, but it also has been brought forth many times and it's, it's not us, it's the state of Minnesota and how they do their dealings with figuring it out.
Well, I will say this, I can't, I wasn't part of those discussions, but and I wanna say this with the most sensitivity as possible, but sometimes we have to agree, all of us, that what happened in the past, it, we didn't do it well, it didn't work out, we have to focus on going forward. I don't, I, I like to be aware of that and I do understand that was a discussion we had today, that the community, um, I, does have that concern. I've, I've seen it published in print. Um, I have had it said to me that what's the point of having more meetings if nothing's going to be done? But I can tell you, I can't unilaterally go and close a lane on a state highway. This body can't. Um, we have to allow each agency to do what they're required to do for their parameters and meeting safety guidelines and, and traffic and traffic control. We are working as quickly as possible to get that implemented, but have to make sure that the, the final decision really is a safe one.
Is it outside of our authority to do something? Like put up some sturdy blocks there, is that something that the state has to approve?
I'm not sure about, I'm not sure.
The concern that I have is, is we're like, we're heading down the right path, but if we're, if we're a year from now with nothing, or even three months from now, though nothing happening, I think we failed.
I don't think it'll be that long, um, without holding anyone to anything, because I'm certainly not in charge of, um, any other agency's internal analysis, but I do not believe we will, we will be talking months at all. This is, this particular solution was selected because it, it could be worked through, um, in the most efficient manner.
I, I like to find out what the city could do. That doesn't interfere with what the, the state highway. I mean, I'd like to know what our options are as a city that we could do with that quarter as far as protection.
I don't know if we have any issues, that's a state highway, we don't, we don't have any.
But where does, where does our, where does a state highway, does a sidewalk, does the sidewalk belong to the city? Is the, just up against the building, is that where?
I would have to check on right-ofways and those things. I would, I would hesitate for us to just go do something without MNDOT weighing in because there are, it is a state highway, we have to respect that, there are certain parameters. I can, I can ask that question. Um, I, I will again tell you that the people that were on that discussion today, I think were the right people to be at that table and I would also hesitate to rush, um, to implement something when we are working on something else that may impact, impact our ability to carry that out. I will ask that question, but I, I know there is an urgency. I know that most people want, I, I mean, I have heard things about jackhammers and barricades and that's, we just, we also have to be thoughtful that any solution, doing something doesn't always mean we're doing the right thing. And I wanna be careful that, that the solution that we implement is being considerate of all of those agencies and, and safety of our patrons. I, I don't, I know that that's not outside of going out and, and closing the lane down. I know that that doesn't feel like enough, enough right now.
I think, I think we're, there, there, we do what I intend right now and, uh, I don't know if this can go any faster or not, but there are needs going on right now and we can't go ahead and do something that will be read in the future. So we gotta do some research to make sure we're in, in line with all the people that are gonna be working together on this project and not do it in their own, in a fast way and get it over with and then regret it in the future, so.
Regret?
Just be patient a little bit.
Regret what? Putting something there temporarily or?
I didn't, I didn't say that.
Oh, I was just.
I think we just, you know, let's just wait and see what MNDOT brings back. I mean, they're, they're the experts, um.
I still would like to know what is available for our city, for us, if I could get, if I could get that.
Yeah, yep, and Amy, Amy will look into that.
I will look into that, it may be a matter of engaging our, our engineers and I will do that to the point that there will be a point I think we will not wanna invest, I will try to get a, a general answer for us.
I get it, we may or may not, but I'd at least like to have a discussion to understand, say, okay, you know, the DOT is doing their thing, but in the meantime, this is what we as a city could do to make that corner more safe. And that's, that's all I'm asking.
Okay, I will, I will ask that question.
All right, thank you, Amy. Uh, Chief Frobber, anything tonight?
I just wanna thank the citizens of Cookson that came to our open house over the weekend. It was a very big success, we had several hundred people down there and, uh, it turned out really well. Weather was nice, so that was really good. Um, also wanna congratulate the new officers that were sworn in tonight, it'll be great working with them and, uh, they're, they'll be a good addition to an already really good police department. Um, last thing is, is with, uh, harvest starting today and, uh, roads are gonna be really muddy. Just everybody, please slow down a little bit and, uh, allow a little extra time. There's gonna be a lot of traffic on the roads and, uh, we just want everybody to be safe, so, thank you.
Thanks. Brian, anything?
Just to kind of follow up from Kim coming and going through the 2020 audit. With that being done, um, the filing with the state now has been completed. Also with that then, I've completed the tax increment financing that also has to be completed with the state. Um, the CARES Act funds that you got last year as a city, um, the auditing for that part now has been extended so that we'll have to finish that up, but those pretty much have all been done and reports done. Um, now kind of looking at with the American Rescue Plan, some of the lost revenue items. Um, and they have, um, kind of a, a good formula for us to work with. You kind of do a, calculate your base year general revenue, compare that to your calculated actual gen- general revenue. And then when you get those, you have to go back when you calculate the average revenue growth. So we have to go back to 2016 to get what those percentage rates are. And once we have those percentage rates, then we'll also look at the total revenue reimbursements for those time periods to see the differences. Because they're giving us a base of four point one percent to work with. And so far from visiting with some other finance directors, the base that they're giving us, the four point one is much more favorable than what these other calculations are for the average annual revenue growth. So we'll be kind of looking at that over the next couple of weeks here and working towards that and, um, kind of our committee for the American Rescue Funds will And kind of our committee for the American Rescue Funds will be meeting tomorrow and discussing more kind of some options that we can bring forward of what some of the needs are and how that these funds will impact the community and be able to benefit our community.
Thanks, Ryan.
So as Amy stated, cleanup week is the 25th through the 29th. Just a reminder to please not put anything out 72 hours before your pickup day, especially if it rains. The guys appreciate mattresses not being a thousand pounds. So, and if you can separate your brush and your household garbage and your demo, it makes it a lot quicker for the guys if they can go up to a pile, scoop it up and throw it in the truck rather than having to sort through piles and it just speeds up the process. So the water department replaced the water main, one block of water main on Widman Lane this week. There was a main break and it's kind of right away in the backyard. So they bored a new line in there. The leak was in basically inaccessible area. So we bored a new main in underneath inaccessible area and tied it in on the other side. So when they fixed the leak, the pipe was stamped with 1876. So it was, it was time.
So we got our money's worth out of that one?
Yeah, yeah. The street crews are, so tomorrow they're going to start working on the Washington School sidewalk to go into the daycare center. That's going to be put in on that north building. So, and they've, they've been doing some curb work and getting the new guys trained in on some of the new equipment and it's been going well, so. The library. So the flat roof was patched on the library and we went up there and put about a whole case of silicone over the windows to get us till next spring. So Chris hasn't called me, so I assume it was dry over the last couple of rains. So we're talking to a couple of contractors and they'll be coming with a few different The flat roof contractor said putting a flat roof back there is not a good idea. There's just too many, too many points that are hard to seal up with a flat roof. And when the guy that's going to make money coming back and fixing a roof tells you not to do it, it's probably not a good idea. So we're looking at going away from that and we're getting advice from experienced contractors on that. And so next spring, cross our fingers, I'll have a contractor lined up for that, so.
Well, we have, as far as cleanup rank, are you guys going to do some type of like advertisement or flyer that kind of shows like what the best way to manage their brush and demo and all that?
There's the advertisement in the shopper right now that asks them to separate and bundle their branches in four foot lengths and.
Could we get that on the Facebook and?
Yeah, we are planning to.
Okay.
It's on the website now, I believe, but we are planning to share that out on our Facebook page.
Many places we can get it, right?
For sure.
All right.
You know, Brandon, I have another question too. I've been out east here the last couple of days here and I noticed, you know, over by my place, we've got about three inches of rain since Friday or whatever day it was it started raining. And there's two ditches out there that have still got a lot of water in them. And I keep looking at them, they're before the drainage ditch to go down to the river. Should there be something done there now?
Are you talking the ditches on Fisher Avenue or?
Yep, I know it's county. So should we be talking to them? If those ditches aren't draining now, what are they going to be like in the spring when we get all that water, if we get a lot of snow?
I know there's talks of cleaning the ditch. The county was talking about cleaning the ditch out east and then I think even part of it going north for some portion, but that if you're talking the south portion on Fisher, that runs, that runs east from what I understand to that main ditch and then heads south.
This is just about the driveway past Drafts is where is that? If you go out that, it's just before the vein run to go to the river, you know? And if that ditch isn't draining now, it ain't going to drain later.
Yeah, there's, well, we're going to have discussions on that coming up, I know. So I've talked to Whit Seth a little bit about it, so they have some ideas and it's just going to be, we'll see what comes out of it, whether it's going to be the county's responsibility or ours.
Whoever's, but I mean, something needs to be, because you know, we've had trouble in the spring before. If we get a lot of snow, it gets to be a lot of water over there and where's it going?
Yeah, it's, me and Amy have had this conversation when I first started and it's on my radar. It's not a cheap or an easy fix, but that doesn't mean we don't do it either. So we just got to figure out the right way to do it and whose responsibility it is.
As long as you're aware of it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brandon. Jake?
Right now we are preparing for winter. Guys are finishing up their fall cleanup and finishing up mowing and stuff like that, blowing out lines. We did pour some concrete slabs at the Diamond Five out of Highland this week. We're going to put some nicer dugouts for a baseball field for next summer. So the guys did that. Right now we're scheduling Sports Center. We were supposed to be putting ice in the main rink, but over the weekend we had a little bit of a hiccup with our chiller. We had some power and it blew out the circuit breaker and some fuses. So did restart. So yesterday I was out there and Valley Electric was out there and couldn't quite understand how to fix it last night. So this morning we had a guy from Valley Electric that works with that system before, he fixed it. So we're back and running now, so a little behind, but we'll get ice in by next week on the main. So other than that, we're just keep moving forward. Registration open for all our winter programming and stuff like that. So that's all I got. Thanks.
Thanks, Jake. Craig, anything?
No report.
Thank you. Robert, anything to report?
Absolutely not.
Great. Welcome once again. Glad you're here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Y'all are awesome. I can't wait to have something to tell you. Or quite frankly, I can't wait to have something bad to tell you. To have something to tell you. Don't waste your time.
We'll take the good first. Thank you.
You know what they say about beggars.
Paul, anything?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anybody I'm missing?
Yeah.
No, yeah, back in the corner.
As Jake mentioned, we had a power outage on Friday evening that caused some problems for our public safety systems, our police and our fire. I was able to mitigate most of those today, but I will be taking a close look at the battery backup systems that we have in place at those locations for future outages. And I'm happy to report that all of the equipment that was ordered is now in operation for Channel 3. So bigger and better systems there. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thanks, Chad. I think all you guys ought to be over here, so I ain't going like this. Let's start with Mr. Melby, anything to report?
Not really, just I think you've got better broad down there than we got out in Virginia. It's been cutting in and out, but no report tonight.
Thanks, Wayne. Tom?
Just welcome to the new officers and welcome, Robert.
Thank you.
That's about it.
Thank you. Delane?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Joe?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Don, anything?
Welcome, Robert.
Thank you.
Crookston. And I want to also thank the council and Amy for the concern about the corner over there because I think Amy sent us an email and it covered her meeting with that group very well and gave us some ideas of what we had to do, have to do about it, being patient a little bit and looking forward to the future of that corner being fixed. And it's too long of a time when you have people getting hurt around the corner. So I think MINDOT and all those other groups that, on that group will come to some good issue, solving issues and also I think we have to be a little bit patient and that they can get their job and do it right with the right way. Thank you again.
Thanks, Don. Clayton?
I'd just like to congratulate and welcome Officer Brandon and Ed Volt to the Crookston Police Department.
Thanks. Steve?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Christie?
I want to welcome our new community development director. So excited to have you onboard. I'm very excited to kind of see that we've rounded out that search and have somebody on. I just wanted to, you know, take a moment to just, you know, my thoughts and prayers go out with Kaylee and her family as she recovers as we go forward. I attended the Erase Stigma Community Event by Alumna and Hope Coalition this weekend about suicide awareness and prevention. And I know that we've had some recent tragedies in our city and I just wanted to acknowledge those. And I'd like to see maybe in the future some type of links to some of these resources on our city website because it is problematic for as many young people as we've lost recently. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Christie. I also would like to welcome the new officer, James and Lauren. When this accident happened, a very tragic accident, I was reached out by KVLY and I directed all their questions to our city administrator. Same with the Grand Forks Herald, she did have a couple of questions about the corridor study, which I answered, but I still directed anything about the accident to our city administrator. I was disappointed last night that WDAY, Channel 8, had a comment on the five o'clock news that they didn't have their facts because I didn't talk to them and what they quoted me was far from anything. So I'm going to leave it at that. I got a funny for the day. I had a 12-year-old named Brooke that reached out to me and she's got a request that Halloween be on Saturdays forever. So I said I would relay that message to our city attorney and our, and our city administrator and they can work out the details. So just a reminder, there is no ways and means tonight. Nothing else coming for council. We are adjourned. Thank you.